Here, Mary Ann Dwyer here. This is Kellum Knight absent with notice. Kevin McCallum. Diane Salter.
Here.
Dr. Awla.
Here.
Jan Meek here. Dr. Schmittl.
Here.
And we do not have any student representatives as they are ill, so you just pick the letters.
I think Jan just got there.
Yes, Jan. Jan Stevens.
Okay, well, I'll stand for fledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first take out your high school student report. Anything to put to report?
Still coming.
Still coming, and we're cheering weeks and those kinds of things are coming up next week.
Okay.
So we'll get that information out. It's already kind of off the table.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we've got superintendent's report.
All right, I'm gonna be free here, but I'm gonna come over here and I'll just talk over here. As we know, we're in the middle of a bond campaign. I'm just going to, sorry, I'm gonna block you off here. I'm gonna just take us to our website. Website houses all the information regarding the bond. Everything about the basics is a .83 mil increase, nineteen point five million dollar bond, as we all know. It talks about some of the reasons that we're doing this. There's a list in this of all of the projects and the cost that came from our last forum. We put it in the format recommended by some of the people that were in attendance there, with the cost, projections, and whatnot. There's information on this site about how much this will cost. That is right in this section. We have another community forum that's coming up on February 18th. It will be right here in this room. And there's some information about how to vote. And then at the bottom, there's a list of, it's an FAQ, a frequently asked question. We had some that were asked at the forum, others that had been submitted. There's a link there to submit questions as well. So we want this to be interactive. Just throwing this out there for the audience here. Feel free to submit questions. Ask any questions that you have regarding the bond. Don't hesitate to ask. Get educated. And we appreciate your time in doing so. So any questions from the board for this?
So the top line where it says click here.
Yep.
That's where you see the questions that have already been posted with the answers.
Correct.
Then the line before it is you click and it'll bring up something that you can submit a question.
So all of these, these are questions that have been asked or submitted. And there's, I think, there's thirty-seven or thirty-eight questions. It's like seven pages long now. But anytime people ask questions, we take it and we put it on this ongoing list. And then there is a spot here. If you have a question, just click on this. And click in here. It just tells you, you know, you're a parent or a kid, student, or whatever. And then you ask a question.
It doesn't matter where you are looking.
And it's confidential unless you want to put your name with it. Goes to me, and then I put it on that FAQ.
So what website is that?
It is a Brandon Schools website in the QuickLinks.
Brandon Schools website?
Brandon.
QuickLinks.
QuickLinks and Brandon 2020 bond.
Perfect. Should be simple, right?
And QuickLinks is off to the left. There'll be a couple of things that you could choose. And I know it was up near the top.
Here's the district's main page.
Yep, there you go.
Here's the QuickLink, and it's right here. Or it's BrandonSchoolsBond.com.
All right, so it's a sixth item down on the QuickLinks.
Thank you.
On the Brandon Schools website.
And that's it.
Perfect.
So just wanted to relay that at our meeting here. All right. Thank you, Ms. Salter. Salter, appreciate it.
Okay, anything else?
That's it from me.
Okay, next we have public comments and questions on agenda business.
None.
None, okay.
For my own sake, I would like to add action item, which is for the purchase agreement for Sherman Court property.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Okay, next is approval of consent agenda. Could I get a motion, please?
I move to reapprove the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Information and discussion items. Board of Education committee reports. Does anybody have one?
No.
Okay. Finance report. Jan, you're back up again.
Yeah, I, tonight, the board will be voting on the budget amendment, and then it's a budget amendment. And as I just went through in the study session, we're looking at a slight operating deficit. Food service fund is balanced, and the childcare fund is slight operating deficit, but fund balance is left in the childcare fund.
Okay, thank you, Jan. I know you went into it in depth.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And I'll take it again.
Yeah, no, no, thank you very much.
I think so.
Okay, education report, Dr. Dave. Dr. Awla.
Okay, so at our work session about two weeks ago, we have a whole team of us that have been working on expanding the Brandon Virtual School. We've had a virtual school in this district for seven years. It's been led by Brian Moore. And we are looking to expand this to reach more students in the community and beyond. We are proposing, as we talked about in our work session, introduction of Summit Virtual School. Summit Virtual. The Brandon I-Tech Center would be the home of Summit Virtual. It would be a new wing of our Brandon Virtual program. And I will talk about some of the basics. But this, through our marketing company, this is the first crack at a new logo here. We've had a number that have been shared with us in our team like this. But our theme is anytime, any place, any pace. So it's the idea that it's really individualized based on the needs of the student. So what is it? It's a high-quality alternative to the traditional school setting. More and more students across the country are looking for alternate, alternates to the typical brick and mortar schooling, homeschooling. There's many people that just do traditional virtual schooling. That is a growing population in this community and beyond. That's the group that we're really targeting here. It is an online virtual school with courses that can be completed anytime, anytime of day, any place. They could be in California, they could be in Canada, they could be anywhere, anyplace, and at any pace. It's a good way to be a year-round school where our staff will be able to work with students about what's the best pace for courses to be completed. So whereas done, whereas led, the courses are online courses. This would be a support center here that we would have set up where it would be, if this is approved, we would be designing what that course or this support area would look like, but it would have staff and student mentors to be able to help students with their schoolwork. And then there's always a mentor teacher that goes along with it. Brian Moore was the head of Brandon Virtual, would also be the head of the Summit Virtual. Why is it needed? There's an increasing number of students that fall in this category. In this community alone, there are more and more people looking for an alternative to the traditional setting. So we want to meet their needs of those students that are particularly within our community. So what type of students does this appeal to? The non-traditional. There are a lot of kids that do the virtual cyber school full-time, some that do one or two courses. Homeschool is a big population that is using virtual schooling. Homeschooling is obviously growing leaps and bounds. There are a number of students that need flexibility. For example, there's students that have advanced athletic aspirations. We have kids that are in junior hockey, and they're stationed up in Canada playing hockey. They're able to still be part of the Brandon School District through Summit Virtual and take courses. There's other students that are future Olympians. We have ice skaters, gymnasts, and whatnot. There are a lot of them that are pursuing these. They have intense training regimen. This allows them that kind of flexibility. There are others that have other interests and responsibilities. So one idea that we had was it might be a student interested in being a carpenter. And maybe by doing this, they're able to create some flexibility. They can use part of their time doing virtual so that at noon, they're able to meet up with the construction crew and get advanced journeyman skills and whatnot. So there's flexibility there. It's individualized. People looking for really a personalized education for their kids. Courses that aren't offered, you know, could be an international flavor to it. It could be, you know, a special interest. It could be a variety of different things. And then the last one, there are students that are not finding success in the typical brick and mortar. This is another alternative for students in that category. The next, where do the courses come from? There are many vendors. Brian Moore is the director. He is like a general contractor on this. So he would look, and these are the different courses that he has. There's a giant list of courses. The primary are BHS, Edgenuity, Michigan Virtual, and K-12. But we also get courses by all of those other groups that are there as well. Who teaches it? There's a fully certified online teacher for every subject that a student signs up for. There's a mentor teacher for that student. And then obviously, we would have the support center here to help students with academics so that you have that face-to-face contact. We're looking, as we're planning this out, we're looking at about twenty hours a week if we hit our target number of students beyond this. When would it begin? This will be a year-round school, which will go July 1 through June 30. We have submitted our request for it to be approved by the state, but we are asking for this to be an online option for students. So that as a little overview, I know we talked about it before, we're pretty excited about what this can do. But wanted to open up for any questions, which we're gonna have.
So if you're in it full-time, you can still walk, and we walk, proms, sports, everything?
Absolutely. Other questions?
So overall, I think the schedule is, if it runs July to June, but our school year is September, whatever, so you just, you could still enroll and do it September in the traditional sense because of the pacing?
Anytime, anyplace, anypace. Yep.
Are there any restrictions on someone who, for example, there any students that can't use this service?
Not really. It's just like any other student. It just opens up more opportunities for more kids to find a incentive to study.
Anybody else anywhere? I know we did, any class they can want, it'll probably be available now.
I struggle to see a negative, really. I don't really see a downside. We're offering more opportunity, you know, to more different.
Or the word individualized.
Yeah.
Pop it out there.
So I really don't see a downside for us or someone who takes advantage.
The downside of it really is this is not for a majority of people. The face-to-face being in the classroom, being able to work with groups of your classmates and whatnot, that is, that is a great option for most students. So that's the downside of it. We want to make sure that this, this fits for certain students. Never be counselors walking through about what's the best fit for, you know, for students.
So if you're the student that likes the atmosphere, but let's say there's a class that's not offered with brick and mortar, how do you work that into their normal days? So is it like a second hour, they would come here, and then go to their traditional classes? Or how do you integrate the both of them?
So it would be two branches of Brandon Virtual. There would be this one for students that are looking for a sizable amount of their time being virtual, all for a sizable amount. Brandon Virtual, as it has existed for the last seven years, will still exist at Brandon High School. And I could have a virtual class and be studying American Sign Language, second hour. That will still be there for all of our brick and mortar students.
Would that still be called Summit Virtual? This would just be a Brandon Virtual?
That's Brandon, that would be called Brandon Virtual. This is Summit Virtual. For the alternative population, there is, there is a benefit to having, to having, being a separate entity with some of its own autonomy, separate from Brandon High School. And that's the idea of having some different colors, a different name. It does have autonomy. It is a different program than Brandon High School.
So it's really a demographic that we're looking at, differentiating between the two different programs, more so than really what we're offering?
Correct.
Yeah, I think, like I said, it's a win-win. I don't see the loss. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's gonna be one of the action items here tonight, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll go to action items. Could I get a motion for the approval of the Brandon High School freshman STEM classes overnight?
We would that the Brandon Board of Education approve the high school freshman STEM classes overnight trip to Grand Rapids, Michigan, April 27 through April 28, 2020, as presented.
Okay, any discussion on that? I think every year now they've been going.
And they always do really well?
Yeah, they do do very well. We've been getting some winners coming the last couple of years. Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Could I get an approval of the budget amendment one resolution?
I move the Brandon Board of Education approve the budget and amendment resolution one as presented.
Okay, any more discussion on that? We've talked it out in the prior workshop. Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion pass. Oh, correction. Is this a resolution? Do we need a roll call?
It's a good discussion.
Yeah, could I get a roll call, please, start up that.
Sarah Allen.
Yes.
John Trichier.
Yes.
Melissa Park. Yes. Mary Ann Dwyer.
Yes.
Kevin McCallum.
Yep.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Okay, secure. Motion passes. Approval of the expansion of the Brandon Virtual School.
We would that the Brandon Board of Education approve the addition of a year-round virtual program to be called Summit Virtual, beginning in the 2020-21 school year as presented. Support.
Any other further discussions? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any, any, but any against say no. Motion passes. Okay, could I get a motion to approve the introduction of home construction?
We would that the Brandon Board of Education approve introduction to home construction as a high school course, beginning in the 2020-21 school year as presented.
Okay, any discussion? I know this is a new question.
Reminder, we talked about this in the work session. This is a pre-course before tiny house construction. It's learning the skills on a small scale that can eventually learn or use at a large scale.
And the tiny house construction is already an existing class over at school.
Correct.
So, okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Could I get a motion for the reduction of staff?
We would that the Brandon Board of Education approve the reduction of one maintenance staff member, Todd Hubbard, effective February 28, 2020.
Support.
Okay, discussion is, that's all we needed for today?
Yeah, that's all we need for today. That's a part of that nineteen-twenty reduction that we need to do to try to balance the budget this year.
Okay. All those opposed, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed say no. Motion passes. Could I get a motion to, for the purchase, approval of the purchase agreement for the Sherman Court property?
I move the Brandon Board of Education accept the purchase agreement for the sale of the Sherman Court property as presented.
Okay, any more discussion on that?
At our work session, we have Mr. Joe Fetter in the back, who is looking to build a hole on the property. We discussed that at length during the work session.
Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Just real quick, I have to think this out. Do we need a roll call for watching? Okay, next on our agenda is citizens input. We have one.
Hey, good evening.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you all?
Great, thank you.
My name is Margaret McQuiston, and I serve on the Board of Education in Lakeview. I also serve on the Board of Directors with the Oakland County School Board Association. At our January meeting, we, the Board of Directors, awarded a small token of appreciation to all our districts that were present. Unfortunately, we didn't have a member from your board present, so I am here to see you tonight. And I have a small token of appreciation. Would you be so kind to thank all the board members?
I'd like to read a note that the Oakland County School Board Association Board of Directors
would like to, would like me to review. Dear Board of Education, and I realize it's February, and I'm sorry, this is the next reading I could get to, I don't think. So the month of January marks the observance of school board recognition. Your Board of Education performs a vital role in ensuring the success of every student. Please accept a token of appreciation from the Oakland County School Boards Association. Thank you for serving your students and the community. Sincerely, the Oakland County School Board Association Board of Directors. The Oakland County School Board Association is your county area, CASPA, your county area School Board Association. Our purpose is to inform and engage every trustee and advocate on behalf of public education. Throughout the year, the OCSBA provides members affordable local opportunities for networking and professional development. Our dinner meetings feature a presentation and a timely educational issue, and we invite superintendents to join in also. OCSBA's Government Relations Committee keeps members up to date on legislative issues that affect every school district in Oakland County and Michigan. Our GRC meets monthly at Oakland Schools when the state legislature is in session. Whether you are able to attend GRC meetings or not, we ask that every district appoint a trustee so that we can share legislative communication with your boards, which are all welcome to attend. We hope that you'll take advantage of the opportunities that OCSB offers you as you serve the students of your district and your community. We hope to see you at our next meeting on Wednesday, March 18, 2020. Our topic will be launch Michigan, and Don Moore Truba from HNAS School will be representing that that evening. So thank you for all you do. Thank you for you this time.
Oh, thank you very much. This was a first that the Oakland Schools gave us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, meetings adjourned. Thank you.
Not really. It's, it's just like any other student. It just opens up more opportunities for more kids to find a incentive to study.
Anybody else anywhere? I know we did, any class they can want, it'll probably be available now.
I struggle to see a negative, really. I don't really see a downside. We're offering more opportunity, you know, to more different.
Or the word individualized.
Yeah.
Pop it out there.
So I really don't see a downside for us or someone who takes advantage.
The downside of it really is this is not for a majority of people. The face-to-face being in the classroom, being able to work with groups of your classmates and whatnot, that is, that is a great option for most students. So that's the downside of it. We want to make sure that this, this fits for certain students. Never be counselors walking through about what's the best fit for, you know, for students.
So if you're the student that likes the atmosphere, but let's say there's a class that's not offered with brick and mortar, how do you work that into their normal days? So is it like a second hour, they would come here, and then go to their traditional classes? Or how do you integrate the both of them?
So it would be two branches of Brandon Virtual. There would be this one for students that are looking for a sizable amount of their time being virtual, all for a sizable amount. Brandon Virtual, as it has existed for the last seven years, will still exist at Brandon High School. And I could have a virtual class and be studying American Sign Language, second hour. That will still be there for all of our brick and mortar students.
Would that still be called Summit Virtual? This would just be a Brandon Virtual?
That's Brandon, that would be called Brandon Virtual. This is Summit Virtual. For the alternative population, there is, there is a benefit to having, to having, being a separate entity with some of its own autonomy, separate from Brandon High School. And that's the idea of having some different colors, a different name. It does have autonomy. It is a different program than Brandon High School.
So it's really a demographic that we're looking at, differentiating between the two different programs, more so than really what we're offering?
Correct.
Yeah, I think, like I said, it's a win-win. I don't see the loss. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's gonna be one of the action items here tonight, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we'll go to action items. Could I get a motion for the approval of the Brandon High School freshman STEM classes overnight?
We would that the Brandon Board of Education approve the high school freshman STEM classes overnight trip to Grand Rapids, Michigan, April 27 through April 28, 2020, as presented.
Okay, any discussion on that? I think every year now they've been going.
And they always do really well?
Yeah, they do do very well. We've been getting some winners coming the last couple of years. Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Could I get an approval of the budget amendment one resolution?
I move the Brandon Board of Education approve the budget and amendment resolution one as presented.
Okay, any more discussion on that? We've talked it out in the prior workshop. Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion pass. Oh, correction. Is this a resolution? Do we need a roll call?
It's a good discussion.
Yeah, could I get a roll call, please, start up that.
Sarah Allen.
Yes.
John Trichier.
Yes.
Melissa Park. Yes. Mary Ann Dwyer.
Yes.
Kevin McCallum.
Yep.
Diane Salter.
Yes. Okay, secure. Motion passes. Approval of the expansion of the Brandon Virtual School.
We would that the Brandon Board of Education approve the addition of a year-round virtual program to be called Summit Virtual, beginning in the 2020-21 school year as presented. Support.
Any other further discussions? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any, any, but any against say no. Motion passes. Okay, could I get a motion to approve the introduction of home construction?
We would that the Brandon Board of Education approve introduction to home construction as a high school course, beginning in the 2020-21 school year as presented.
Okay, any discussion? I know this is a new question.
Reminder, we talked about this in the work session. This is a pre-course before tiny house construction. It's learning the skills on a small scale that can eventually learn or use at a large scale.
And the tiny house construction is already an existing class over at school.
Correct.
So, okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Motion passes. Could I get a motion for the reduction of staff?
We would that the Brandon Board of Education approve the reduction of one maintenance staff member, Todd Hubbard, effective February 28, 2020.
Support.
Okay, discussion is, that's all we needed for today?
Yeah, that's all we need for today. That's a part of that nineteen-twenty reduction that we need to do to try to balance the budget this year.
Okay. All those opposed, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed say no. Motion passes. Could I get a motion to, for the purchase, approval of the purchase agreement for the Sherman Court property?
I move the Brandon Board of Education accept the purchase agreement for the sale of the Sherman Court property as presented.
Okay, any more discussion on that?
At our work session, we have Mr. Joe Fetter in the back, who is looking to build a hole on the property. We discussed that at length during the work session.
Okay, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. Just real quick, I have to think this out. Do we need a roll call for watching? Okay, next on our agenda is citizens input. We have one.
Hey, good evening.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you all?
Great, thank you.
My name is Margaret McQuiston, and I serve on the Board of Education in Lakeview. I also serve on the Board of Directors with the Oakland County School Board Association. At our January meeting, we, the Board of Directors, awarded a small token of appreciation to all our districts that were present. Unfortunately, we didn't have a member from your board present, so I am here to see you tonight. And I have a small token of appreciation. Would you be so kind to thank all the board members? I'd like to read a note that the Oakland County School Board Association Board of Directors would like to, would like me to review. Dear Board of Education, and I realize it's February, and I'm sorry, this is the next reading I could get to, I don't think. So the month of January marks the observance of school board recognition. Your Board of Education performs a vital role in ensuring the success of every student. Please accept a token of appreciation from the Oakland County School Boards Association. Thank you for serving your students and the community. Sincerely, the Oakland County School Board Association Board of Directors. The Oakland County School Board Association is your county area, CASPA, your county area School Board Association. Our purpose is to inform and engage every trustee and advocate on behalf of public education. Throughout the year, the OCSBA provides members affordable local opportunities for networking and professional development. Our dinner meetings feature a presentation and a timely educational issue, and we invite superintendents to join in also. OCSBA's Government Relations Committee keeps members up to date on legislative issues that affect every school district in Oakland County and Michigan. Our GRC meets monthly at Oakland Schools when the state legislature is in session. Whether you are able to attend GRC meetings or not, we ask that every district appoint a trustee so that we can share legislative communication with your boards, which are all welcome to attend. We hope that you'll take advantage of the opportunities that OCSB offers you as you serve the students of your district and your community. We hope to see you at our next meeting on Wednesday, March 18, 2020. Our topic will be launch Michigan, and Don Moore Truba from HNAS School will be representing that that evening. So. So thank you for all you do, thank you for your new this time.
Oh, thank you very much, this was a first, that the Oakland schools keep us, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
They appreciate it. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, meetings adjourned, thank you.